My teammate is nice, caring, you can tell her anything and she won't share it with anybody else.
She's fun, she's awesome, and she's cute. She comes every Friday.
She's really nice, she's caring, and I like to spend time with her. She's funny.
She's really creative, and she's really smart, and she's just really helpful.
We're kinda, I guess, connected educationally because we like love to read and stuff like that.
He encourages me to get my homework done and just to follow my dreams and my goals.
We have the same likes in sports, like we did track, you know, we played basketball and stuff like that.
He's someone that I could depend on, you know, helping me out with things. Someone I could turn around and ask for questions if I don't get it.
She's very encouraging and helps me with a lot of things.
We like to play a lot of games, color, go outside, play basketball, and play games, like board games.
We play Minaplay a lot.
Play board games.
Like if there's any assignments that need help on because she's really good with math.
We usually do like math puzzles or some type of puzzle, and then we just like talk while we're doing that, or we can color.
We'll talk, and he's much wiser than me, so he can help advise me about life.
We have like competitions sometimes during chess and Connect Four. That's a really competitive board game for us.
We talk about my future college, and she helps me with that.
We play board games. We rack talk each other when we're losing and stuff like that, like you're cheating at Uno and stuff.
Everyone should have a teammate because it's just something you can look up to.
They're there for you, and that's your chance to connect with someone one-on-one and just be with them.
Everyone should have a teammate because they help encourage you and make you feel better about yourself.
Everyone should have a teammate because it's like another person that you can trust and talk to.
Teammates kind of like a parent. They give you advice and can help you with your problems. It's just nice to have that listening ear.
I think everyone should have a teammate because, you know, honestly, some people just don't have people to talk to.
It's a great way to move you in the right direction.
Everybody needs someone that will give them a brighter future and that will help them envision and dream.
I call to order this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for October 11th, 2016. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Annie is excused.
Mr. Schulte?
Present.
I would note that the Open Meeting Act is posted at the back of the room, behind the double doors, if anyone wants to take a look at those. And tonight, under Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success, we have a couple of items. First, tonight, we are pleased to have many students here representing the wonderful opportunities that are provided after school at 25 of our CLC schools. We know that the work of CLCs goes beyond before and after school. CLCs, along with a host of community partners, connect services, supports, and opportunities to ensure student success, thriving families, and strong neighborhoods. In October, they celebrate the National Lights On After School Event, along with many cities across the country. This event provides a platform to raise awareness for the positive impact after school has on students and families. High-quality after-school programs help students learn, grow, and experience opportunities which support success both in school, out of school, and life. This year, the CLCs will celebrate Lights On After School at Goodrich CLC, and I'd like to introduce Susie Stout, the school community coordinator at Park CLC, who will tell us more.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity for us to speak with you this evening about the positive impact that Lincoln Community Learning Centers have on our youth. I am proud to have with me tonight several of our youth from the CLC, along with staff and family members. I ask that those present in the audience stand to be recognized. This month, they are speaking out about the importance of after-school programs in honor of the Lights On After School, which is a national awareness campaign to educate and raise awareness for after-school programs sponsored by the After School Alliance. We invite you to join us for this celebration at Goodrich Middle School on October 20th, from 5:30 until 8:00 p.m. It is now my honor to introduce to you three of our youth and a parent who will speak to you tonight about the importance of after-school programs. They are Fernanda Isis Diaz from Belmont CLC, Princess Hayden from Goodrich CLC, and Bernice Hayden from Goodrich. As you can see, we're all growing leaders. One day, we hope to be sitting where you are as community leaders. Youth development is just one component of the broad structure that makes us a community learning center school. What I love about my job as a school community coordinator is the vital hands-on work with our youth that shapes them into responsible, productive members in our community. It is my passion to lay the groundwork, not only to build the student, but to support the families and community at the same time. Now more than ever, we must advocate for our youth. We owe much of our success to the partnerships that we build, who support us and who are interested in strengthening our young people. Thank you for your support, and we ask that you continue to help us keep our doors open and our lights on.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Fernanda Isis Diaz, and I want to talk about after-school clubs. I have been in clubs throughout my elementary career. I believe after-school clubs have a fun, kind, and safe environment. All the clubs I have been in have great students that are nice and have never made fun of each other. The club leaders are always doing their job and always try to make each club day as fun and exciting as they can. I have never heard a negative comment about clubs. Ms. Lindsey, our community coordinator, is always kind and hardworking. I hope every student in clubs is as passionate about clubs as I am. Have a great rest of your day. Also, I want to give a shout-out to Trax.
Hello, my name is Princess Hayden. Thank you for letting me be here. CLC has been one of the most, I don't even know how to explain it. Well, when I first came here from Louisville, Kentucky, I was kinda scared. This was last year when I was in sixth grade, and for the first few months while I was here, I had to go to the library because I had nowhere else to go. But then, my friends recommended me to go to CLC, so I went, and it was like the best decision I ever made. CLC is an opportunity to make like friends and people who care about you and would help you with whatever you got. And it was an opportunity to have fun during school, after-school hours and after-school. And the clubs are amazing, and I'm just so glad that CLC is here because without it, I wouldn't know what to do after-school. How to just be laying in my bed, doing stuff, like just watching TV and playing on my phone all the time. But with CLC, it's just a better influence on me. Thank you for me speaking.
Hello, my name is Bernice Hayden. Thank you so much for having me and caring what I have to say about CLC. I'm a single parent, so CLC just existing creates a great benefit for me because I work full-time. I work till five o'clock. And I don't want my daughter, she's perfectly capable of being at home by herself, but like she said, I don't want her watching TV, playing around on her cellphone. I would like her time to be filled with as much productive activity as possible. All of the things that Mr. Mayhew said that we're celebrating about this program is truly present at Goodrich. It is a very high-quality after-school program, and I can say that shortly after my daughter was in the program, I have to turn attention to Lindsey because she noticed many strengths in my daughter that I personally always saw in my daughter. But no one had ever taken the time to come to me and say, "I see that your daughter can do this. I see that she can do that. Let's try it." And I mean, it's given her so much confidence, and I think that preserving her confidence is one of the most important things a parent needs to do to get them through this world. It's very important. I'm very concerned about who my daughter spends time with, after-school, babysitting, whoever. If I didn't think it was a good environment, I would not let her be there. For example, I'm from Louisville, Kentucky. Like she said, we moved there from last year, and they had the same after-school program. It wasn't called CLC. It was just an after-school program. I forget what they called it. It covered the same amount of time, and it was pretty unorganized. They weren't supervised well, and you know, most of all, they weren't teaching my daughter things like leadership skills, communications, teamwork, being creative, you know, leading my daughter into the natural place of leadership where, you know, she's just a good peacemaker and mediator and brings people together. And they have made that grow in her. So, you know, I'm just thrilled to have this program. And for a single parent like me, it doesn't have any cost attached to it, which is not even the most important thing, but that's great. I would gladly pay for this kind of after-school care. So, I really want to thank you for having this program for my daughter, and it did make it easier for her to transition here to Lincoln, Nebraska from Louisville. So, thank you so much.
Susie, do we have someone else coming up?
That's it.
Is that our presentation? Thank you so much for coming to address the board. Thank you all. I know that it takes time away from families. Thanks for taking that time to come and talk to us about the CLC program. Are there any comments from board members? Kathy?
Just one. We have several new board members, and the invitation is for them to all show up at Lights On. And some of us are really sad that we have to be out of town that night, but have a great party at the Lights On After School because it is one of the best events of the year. You see stars from all over the city of Lincoln, and they all shine. Good job, ladies.
All right. Thank you again. All right, a quick bit of housekeeping. I was so excited to get to the CLC update. I skipped over the minutes, and we have one set for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. Next, we have a, under Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success, we are joined by Walter Powell and Tom Osborne from the Teammates program. Come on up, gentlemen.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. And first of all, I want to introduce members of the Teammates staff. And I think some of them are in, Tom is back here, so why don't you all of you stand, please. And these folks do a great job, and we appreciate so much their help. And of course, Walter will speak to you, and he heads the whole thing up. Also want to thank the school board for your support, and particularly the LPS administration. We've had tremendous support from you folks, and I know some of you are new, so you may or may not know a lot about Teammates. So I'm going to go quickly. I know I was given five minutes. Reminds me of Congress. You had a green light, then you had a red light, a yellow light, then you had a red light, and then somebody had a hook, and they pulled you off. So I'll be pretty quick. But first of all, Teammates is school-based, so all of our mentoring occurs in the school. And most of our mentors probably launch with their young person. We find that if somebody shows up at least 24 times or more a year, usually great results occur. Many of them are there 30, 35 straight weeks, so we think consistency is really imperative. And we like school-based mentoring for several reasons. Number one, security, because when mentoring occurs in the school setting, you don't have to worry about some kind of extracurricular activity happening that's not going to be good for either the mentor or the mentee. So that's good. We also find that in a school-based setting, we find out a little bit more about the young person because you're always bumping into a counselor or teacher. Sometimes you see how they interact with other students. Sometimes you see them walk in the hallway or eat lunch. And so you get a little better idea of the total person, and we think that's very helpful. Also, if we find that a young person has some special need, maybe it's help with mathematics, maybe some kind of an emotional problem that's above and beyond the mentor's capability, we have people we can refer them to, and we think that's important. And one thing that may relate a little bit to you folks, I think having roughly 1,200 people from the community in the schools is helpful to you because everybody kind of remembers how school was 30, 35, 40 years ago when they went to school, but there have been a lot of changes since. And so they understand better, I think, the issues that people in the schools are dealing with. And I think it probably makes for better community support, which certainly has to be something that you folks can be appreciative of. We know that it works. We have followed our matches with Gallup for a period of five years. And this is what they found out. They found that in between 80 and 85% of the cases, that attendance improves in school. Seems like a little thing, but as you know, declining attendance is the number-one predictor, precursor to somebody dropping out of school. So when attendance improves, grades get better, graduation rates improve, percentage of kids going on to college improves, and we think that's a good thing. Again, in about 80 to 85% of the matches, we find that discipline referrals, antisocial behavior decreases. And that would include substance abuse, teenage pregnancy, gang membership, all of the other deviant activities that we run into, and we think that's good. Then they also found something that we hadn't necessarily anticipated, and that was that young people who had a mentor were much more hopeful, much more optimistic about the future. They began to see a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel, that maybe somehow someday they could get a good education, where maybe they hadn't expected to be able to do so, or they're able to someday have a good job, or maybe live in a decent neighborhood. So when you don't have hope in your life, sometimes you fill your life with the wrong stuff. And when you're hopeful, then things begin to open up. So we think that those results are certainly very positive. Here in Lincoln, we're mentoring about 1,200 young people, and that's the good news, but we have about 700 on a waiting list. And I think there's a message there. Obviously, we need more mentors, and we work at that every day. But also, it indicates that Teammates is well-received and well-respected and has a good image throughout the community because most of those young people are either self-referred or referred by their parents, occasionally by a person in the school. And so what we're working hard to accomplish is to someday maybe see as many as 2,000 matches here in Lincoln. And so that's a lot of what we do. Program-wide, we mentor about 8,000 kids in 145 school districts all across Nebraska and Iowa. Lincoln is the largest. Lincoln is where we started, with 22 matches involving some football players. So young people in Teammates come from all kinds of backgrounds. About 75% are free and reduced lunch, 75% single parent. But we have kids that have straight A's. We have kids from very solid families. But just anyone who wants a mentor, who feels they could benefit from a caring adult in their life, is certainly incorporated into Teammates. So, two last points. One is that we are strength-based. We find that most successful people don't worry a whole lot about their weaknesses. They build on their strengths. And so we identify strengths using Strength Finders, and we affirm those strengths when we see them in play because those strengths often lead to an academic major, possibly to an occupation later on. And so we do a lot of work with strengths. We also do post-secondary mentoring because we found that kids who are first-generation college students persist to graduation, and from year one to year two, about 60% go on. And about 40%, you lose. By providing a post-secondary mentor, we increased that percentage to about 90%. These are mentors who have been there, done that, so we do that. And we feel that every young person should have a marketable skill. And at some point, Teammates feels that post-secondary education is part of that. And so along about the sophomore year, we start getting them prepared to go to community college, trade school, four-year college, whatever it may be. We want them pointed toward a post-secondary degree of some type. So enough from me, and I think Walter has some comments. So Walter's done a great job with Teammates, and we appreciate his help very much. Walter?
Thanks for the opportunity to visit with you this evening. As you know, Lincoln is a great community. But woven within the fabric of any great community is a great school system. We're fortunate to have a great board like this, great leadership at the district and building level. We have extraordinary classroom teachers. But we know that a student that's not motivated to reach their full academic potential, that are not hopeful about their future, or that student that does not have a vision of their future, can oftentimes nullify the positive outcomes of extraordinary classroom instruction. We're fortunate to have more than 1,200 volunteers that go into our schools each week. That results in almost 5,000 hours each month. As a result, we see students that are more motivated, students that are performing better academically. And when we see this happen consistently, what we see is that oftentimes, as Coach mentioned, we see students' academic performance improves, their attendance improves, there is a decrease in the number of disciplinary referrals. And as a result, oftentimes, the trajectory for that young person changes. I could share with you countless examples of stories of how this program has changed the trajectory for young people. But for the sake of time, I will only share one story with you. About five years ago, there was a young man that was a Sudanese refugee. Moved to Lincoln with his family, quiet, timid young man. Someone at Dahl's Middle School thought he would benefit from having a mentor in his life. That young man was matched with a gentleman who happened to be an officer in the Army National Guard. They continued to be matched through graduation. This young man graduated in the spring of this year. Over the summer, that mentor received a call from this young man that he describes that it really moved him emotionally. This young man told him he had decided to... that it really moved him emotionally. This young man told him he had decided to enlist in the military. Couple of weeks ago, I was almost moved to tears as well, when I had the opportunity to observe this mentor swearing this young man into the military. I can tell you, it was just a clear illustration of how the trajectory for a young person can change when someone just invests that one-to-one time with them. After they left the military entrance processing station in Omaha, they made two stops. The first stop they made was to Dawes Middle School, to thank the teachers and administrators for all the ways that they had supported them. The second stop they made was North Star High School, to thank the teachers and administrators for all the support. That mentoring continued even beyond graduation. This is a relationship that will continue far beyond their high school years. And this is often the case for our mentors. So I would just like to, these stories, and stories like this, would not be possible without the support of this board, the district, the district leadership. And I couldn't ask for more supportive leadership at the district level. And the true sign of leadership is when you set an example. And the executive committee is truly due on that. Each member of the executive committee is now serving as mentors in our school system. To me, oftentimes, when people are at the district level, sometimes they're accused of being out of touch with what's happening in the schools. What better way to stay in touch than to spend time in the schools listening to students each week? So I want to thank you for all of your leadership and your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Walter. Kathy?
Walter and I met a couple of weeks ago, and he asked me if I would make a little plea here. You see, I spent 12 years as a teammate mentor. I had two mentees. Sometimes it's just about finding out that impediment that stops those kids from graduating and helping them to overcome it. But Teammates has meant a lot to my life. I spent several years on their Board of Directors. I'm the mom of a child who has had two mentors or mentees, and mom of a teammate facilitator. So I've listened to a lot of stories about how mentorship changes lives, but it doesn't just change the lives of the student. It changes the lives of the mentors. It changes your life forever. I still have contact with both of my former mentees. I have a year off because of sickness of a mom that I'm taking, I'm mentoring my mom right now. But this is something I really miss. So my challenge is that we need 700 mentors to fill the need for Lincoln Public Schools. And that's 700 that we know. We grew 900 students last year. I'm going to challenge my colleagues, challenge every administrator or teacher out in our district. If you can find one hour, one hour a week, that's a one-hour difference in a child's life. But it's a one-hour difference that affects our community, our state, and our country. Take a chance, change your life, become a mentor. Thank you.
Walter, you're absolutely right. The mentor program is, or the Teammates program is something that's very important to Lincoln Public Schools, but not just at the district office, but as Kathy can attest to, also on a personal level, where we've got several board members who are and who have been teammates. I know Dr. Joel's exec committee, a lot of his administrators. In fact, Steve, you have two students, I think, that you're working with. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So this is something that's very important to us. We talk a lot about our graduation rate, and I think that for a district of our size and demographics, our graduation rate is incredible. And I know that the Teammates program is part of that. I think when you're trying to get to a certain point, there are broad-stroke-type things that you can do to try to get your graduation rate up. When you are a high-achieving district like we are, you have to start drilling down. You have to start learning stories and having more touches. And I think that the Teammates program is an important part of that. And I'm glad that Lincoln is a leader in the state with the Teammates program. So Kathy?
Walter, you didn't tell somebody how to become a teammate mentor. So do we have a place they can go to find out how to become a mentor?
Yes.
You need to come up to the mic so they can hear you at home. Otherwise, it'll just be quiet background noise.
Thank you. Just go to our website, teammates.org, and just complete an application online. And that process, from the time you submit an application, that process takes about four to six weeks to get you matched and to get you out to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Well, I'd like to personally thank Tom and Nancy Osborne for this tremendous gift. When you think about a value add in an organization, what better way to demonstrate how important kids are to us than to match up adults with children that need our help? We become coaches, we become guides. Truly is a lot of fun. I've been involved in the program for a long time. Most districts in the country don't have a program like this. And if not for the efforts of Tom and Nancy in forming the framework for this, we wouldn't have 1,300 matches today. Our graduation rate, our NISA student achievement scores, our students that now have greater hope than they've had in a long time, is attributed to the programs that we have, CLCs, and Teammates, and many of the other programs that we have partnerships. We truly are fortunate. And Tom, I just want to say publicly again, thank you so much for your work, your leadership, and your willingness to really, really go out there and make this a Lincoln brand. Because everywhere that Tom goes, he talks about Teammates, and I know a lot of us do as well, too. And most of the folks sitting here representing LPSDO are teammate mentors. And we're going to continue to push that as much as we can, because we believe that there's probably no greater thing that we can do, as Walter said, than get into the schools and really see what's going on through the lens of the children that we're coaching and mentoring. It's a great program and a lot of fun. Thank you.
Walter, Tom, thanks for joining us tonight. All right. Next, that brings us to public comment. I have not received any little blue cards. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board tonight? Seeing none, that brings us to the consent agenda. My understanding is that we have something that we are removing from when it was first published?
No, that has already been accommodated for in the agenda.
That's done in the agenda. Okay, very good. Kathy?
I would move approval of the consent agenda items 8.1 through 8.5.
I saw Lanny, and then Barb?
Second.
Barb?
Yes.
Going for my second. All right. Connie?
And I have, out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential of conflict of interest, and hereby abstain from voting on check number 567886. As part of Agenda Item 8.2A, as set forth in the agenda materials for this meeting, I have signed and filed the recommended form, which reflects my intent, and I vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Other comments? Seeing none. Laura, would you please call the role on the consent agenda?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, items for our first reading. We have nothing from board committees, from the superintendent's office. We have a couple of items on buses, and I'd like to recognize Dr. Standish.
Yes, you have two items before you. That would be a matter of routine business with our budget appropriation process. Part of that process is to allocate resources to replenish our fleet of buses. You'll see in each agenda item, we are actually replacing some buses, but then also increasing the fleet, specifically with the wheelchair buses. So these two agenda items are before you, and because of their size being greater than 500,000, they would come back to you again as a second reading. And we have Ryan Roble and Bill McCoy, both in the audience, if anyone has any questions about the bus purchase. But this is a pretty standard process for us.
Do we have questions? Barb?
I was wondering on the wheelchair buses, do we have seat belts on those?
There are seat belts on the wheelchair buses.
Okay.
Other questions? All right. This will be back for both of these items. We'll be back for action at our next meeting. Thanks, Liz. Next, we have action items tonight. First, item 10.1.1, legislative guidelines. Connie?
Yes, and I would like to just go ahead and move approval of 10.1.1. These were discussed at our last meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I move approval.
Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. Laura, would you please call the role?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, we have several policies for action tonight. We looked at these at our last meeting. Barb?
Yes. These were discussed the last meeting. I'm going to go and move approval in a group, and then let, John Neal is not here tonight, so if there are questions, I guess I'll try to answer them, or someone else can help me out.
And I've been informed that other members of exec committee are prepared to step in if we have any questions as well. Is that what you're going to say?
Okay. I move approval for items 10.1.2, 10.1.3, 10.1.4, 10.1.5, and 10.1.6.
Got it. Thank you. Lanny?
Second motion.
Discussion. Seeing none. Laura, would you please call the role?
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that takes us all the way down to informational items and reports, item 13.1.1. Lanny, is there a report from the Strategic Planning Committee?
Yes, there is. So last night, we had our first hour-long community engagement session with the LPS Citizens Academy. Just wanted to report that it went very well. We had most of our facilitators, not just the ones facilitating last night, but most of the team was there to observe. Then after the session, we had an hour-long debrief session with Leadership Resources, where we refined the process, had some discussion. John Neal was there as well. I was really impressed with that group. The Citizens Academy had lots of good comments. There was a good discussion going on at the tables. Really, it was a great example of what we hope to see in the other sessions. Also, earlier today, Connie and I were at Southeast High School, where we had our first staff-based session. That was the shorter 15-minute version. That also went really well. Connie did a great job with her remarks. And I just wanted to remind board members that by the end of the week, Mr. Neal is going to have the master schedule posted, so we'll be able to go in, check our schedules, select which sessions we can attend and open. And then also wanted to remind the public that our four open house events are Tuesday, November 1st, at Scott Middle School at 6:00 p.m., Monday, November 7th, at Goodrich Middle School at 6:00 p.m., Thursday, November 10th, at Lux Middle School at 6:00 p.m., Tuesday, November 15th, at Mount Zion Baptist Church at 12:30. So, and that information will all be up on the website, but I'd strongly encourage everyone, staff, parents, students, community, to participate in the process.
Neat. Thank you, Lanny. I'm glad to hear that's going well. Are there any other reports from committee chairs on the work that your committees are doing? Seeing none, we will move on to the Career Academy. Lanny, is there a report from the Career Academy?
Yes, there is. And actually, I'd ask, do we have a summer school update tonight?
Oh, I keep skipping things. All right. We have a summer school update. My apologies. I am going to call on Connie. Thank you.
And I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Statham. All right. And I'm going to turn it over to three people, and I will give explanation as they come up. You know that every year, we typically come back and revisit summer school, because we like to have an update on participation. And some of the new things that we've added, we know summer school continues to be a really important aspect of the opportunities students have, both for credit recovery, as well as gaining credits ahead of schedule in order to allow for some scheduling options during the school year. So Pam Robinson is going to be talking about traditional high school summer school as we know it. Lynda Hicks will be talking a bit about some of the ELL opportunities that we have had and are continuing to add to. And J.D. Miller will be talking about some of our elementary and middle school programs around some core curricular areas. So Pam, we'll start with you.
Well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to come this evening and talk to you about the high school summer school program that I'm extremely proud of. I have some statistics I would like to share with you tonight, starting with, this year, we set a record for enrollment. As you can see, in the past 10 years, actually, I started working with summer school back in 2006. Our numbers have doubled. And we also have a record number of students that finished this year, 1,411. Just to give you kind of a visual of what our enrollment has looked like over the years, we had a peak also in 2011, and we'd had a lot of changes in graduation requirements and things that year. And again, we've steadily increased since 2013, up to this year's 1,699 students. Also, to give you an idea of where the students are coming from, you know, all the schools are represented at summer school, including we also allow non-LPS students to enroll in summer school. This year, we had 28 non-LPS students, you know, from not only Lincoln, Nebraska, but everywhere, from even the furthest away was Skasbluff, Nebraska, that attended at summer school this year. By grade, our numbers are pretty standard. This year, we had an increase in 10th graders. Our ninth grade numbers also include 84 students who are incoming ninth graders this year that took classes at Goodrich and North Star, Lincoln High and Park, and then Northeast had a class for Kohler and Dawes students. So that was a great opportunity. All of those students that enrolled in those courses actually completed those courses. Again, male and female numbers are pretty standard. Last year, we had more male students than female students, which was the first time that had happened, and this year, the female numbers went up again. ELL numbers are very consistent. We usually range between 250 and 325 ELL students that enroll in classes, as well as our special education numbers usually run between 275 to 325 special ed students. We did have quite an increase this year, though, in students that were on free and reduced lunch that enrolled in summer school, an increase of just over 100 students this year to 1,115 students. And again, by ethnicity, our biggest increase has been in our Hispanic population of students that has enrolled in summer school. We had under 100 Hispanic students five years ago that enrolled in summer school. So as you can see, those numbers are increasing. And again, by percentage, all the way across the board, we have an increase. At summer school this year, at the high school, we offered 54 different courses. Out of those, we of course have more than one section, and that equaled 98 sections. Just special ed education courses, we had nine, and that was an increase of two courses this year. I'd also like to draw attention to the fact that special education students, district-wide, receiving summer services, not just at the high school program. Those numbers were 610 students received services. E-learning, which are online courses, we offered at North Star, Northeast, Southeast, Bryan, East, and Lincoln High. And this year, we added an additional classroom at East High School. And Lincoln High had two classrooms, and I'm very proud to say that 318 students completed one or more online class. And that's an increase that we have seen, you know, every year, more students are taking online classes, you know, not only just the traditional classes that we're offering at North Star. Certified staff, we have, this year, we had 76 certified staff members, teachers, you know, media specialists, and 39 non-certified staff, which would be office staff, paras, campus supervisors. And every year, I keep track of how many new teachers that we have to the summer school program, and this year, we had 12, which I'm very proud of, the fact that that means a lot of our teachers are wanting to come back and teach summer school. We have several teachers this year, one that has been teaching ever since summer school. We have several teachers this year, one that has been teaching ever since summer school had started. And so that's been, you know, several years that that teacher has been there every year. So I think that speaks volumes to the dedication that the teachers have, you know, to not only their students during the regular school year, but also during the summer. This year, we had one social worker, and thanks to federal programs, we had four additional counselors work at the summer school that was funded by the High School Graduation Initiative Grant. And I think that that was the difference, as you will see here in the next slide, as to our graduation completion. I'm very proud of the fact that 93% of the seniors that were at summer school actually completed their coursework and ended up with their diploma at the end of, of summer school. And again, I credit a lot of that work to those counselors. They divided those students up and made personal contact with those students at least twice a week. One of them even bought their student an alarm clock to make sure that he got up and got to school on time. So I really thank, you know, federal programs, but also the board for allowing us to have that additional staff to work with those students, because as you can see, it really did make a huge difference this year. So in conclusion, there are a lot of people that I could thank, but specifically, I'd like to thank the North Star staff. You know, they welcome us with open arms. Usually, two days after school's out, we're moving in. And, you know, their custodial staff does an excellent job of, you know, not only taking care of our teachers, but getting their building, you know, ready for the upcoming school year. The youth development team that was head by Pete Ferguson, they make a huge difference at summer school. It's great because we have all of those resources there at the building. You know, they're not divided between every school, they're with us every day, as well as federal programs, the bilingual liaisons, and the cultural specialists, you know, as well as the community members. We did have two food drives this year while we were out at North Star. Again, it's a community effort and a, and a district effort to put all of this together. We've already had three meetings, just so you know, and starting to plan for next year because my prediction is that our numbers will either be the same or increase. And so that means that, you know, we're planning on where we're going to hold those classes and what those classes will look like. So thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to, to come and speak to you tonight about the high school, summer school program.
Questions on just that segment?
Barb?
Yes, is the 318 e-learning students, is that in addition to the 1,699 that went to North Star?
No, that's included in that number.
It is included in that number?
Yes.
And I was wondering, do you, like, have a waiting list for e-learning? Is this that area of opportunity for us to perhaps expand the number of classrooms?
That's why we added the, the class at East this year, is because we did have an increase in numbers. We haven't had to turn any students away that wanted the online classes. So, you know, again, we kind of have an idea of, of those coming in before summer school starts. But I do think that down the road, we will need to increase the online classrooms offered, and again, at different locations, not just, not just at North Star.
Yeah, I would encourage looking at that closer because my son was one of the e-learners, and the information I got early on at his home high school kind of made us feel like that maybe he might not be able to do that particular thing because of the classroom limits. So I'm just kind of wondering if people are a little bit hesitant in signing up because they know there's a limited number of slots. So you might want to look at that as maybe an area of opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
My first question was the same as yours. I was just curious, though, what, do you remember which courses, types of courses were offered by the e-learning this year?
Most of the students took, it was a combination increase in health, a lot of the students took health online, GOPo, Government and Politics, as well as a lot of them take an English course online.
Okay. And did they, am I remembering right, they have to be in a classroom for us to, for them to participate, or can they do it all from home?
They are in the classroom every day until the course is completed, but they can also work on the course at home outside of the, of the school day. All tests and quizzes are taken in the classroom with the teacher, though.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, next.
I'm going to talk about elementary, actually, next. The elementary program, I've, we've talked a little bit about in the past, so some of this will be review, but just as a reminder, the funding for the elementary program comes from the Nebraska Department of Education, and it's money that's, that they call flex funding, which is for students that are not verified for special education services but are at risk. So could be below grade level, or there are a number of different factors that we could consider when we think about at-risk. But it's money that's available, and we write a grant proposal for that every year to support the elementary summer program. So the first year that I was in this position, we had eight regional sites, we served 246 students, we really targeted students in grades two and three. And I don't have the statistics on our completion rate, but our, it was not excellent because students were bused from their home school to one of those eight regional sites. And so a lot of times, we'd see drop off in the second or the third week, and so they wouldn't necessarily complete the whole program. So at that time, we met with the elementary principals and asked them about what they might like to do differently to serve more students and have a little more robust elementary program. So one thing that we did was that we changed from a district-driven model to almost giving schools a mini-grant. And so one of the things, like I said, we're required to do is that students have to be, we have to serve at-risk students. So the grants are prorated by the number of free and reduced lunch students at each elementary school. And then each elementary school is allowed to identify the at-risk population that they want to serve. So that may be a certain grade level, that may be multiple grade levels, based on the amount of money that they have, and then what they see in their own student achievement scores, they get to make those decisions. So the allocations for each school ranged from $500 to almost $9,000 to serve students in the summer. And so we had programs at 37 elementary schools, and the only reason we were not at 38 was due to some construction that made it very difficult for one of our elementary schools to host a program, and they are fully intending to do that this summer. So one of the things that I think is most exciting is that when we went from serving just us, you know, a few hundred students in '13, we increased to 400 students the next year, and we have consistently been up over 800 students the last two years. And so as a result, it's costing, it's the same, the grant amount is the same as it was a few years ago, but we are serving significantly more students. We also see that attendance, if you see, the average attendance is about 81%, which means that a student attends 81% of the days that are offered by their school's program. That is significantly higher than we were seeing a few years ago when we had the regional sites. And so I think students are, they have more, we're serving more students, and we're certainly having students attend more days of those summer programs, which is very encouraging. Schools design the programs, and they typically serve literacy, math, or both. And again, they get to make those decisions based on their student, student data. Just a couple of quick things. The feedback that I've heard from schools, they like the flexibility, they like the opportunity to serve more students, they really feel like kids get a bigger and, a better and stronger connection to their own school. Lots of schools will serve grade bands. And so, for example, first and second grade students may be together, and that way, students that are going into second grade have an opportunity to meet and work with second-grade teachers, so they get to know more folks in the building, but they also get to know the teachers that they're going to have the next year. Things that we're looking to do to help schools make good decisions is we're going to look for ways to provide more support for those programs, more suggestions and ideas about how to structure materials to use, assessment tools, different things like that. We would also like to look at long-term effects and see what happens for those students that do attend maybe 10 days or more, 15 days or more, so that we can offer, again, schools more suggestions about what programs seem to have the greatest impact on students, not just during the program, but into the